Welcome to the downtown brought to you by Arlington citizen media. I am Daryl Smith, Jr. And across the internet for me is.
I am Roddy John and across the interrebs for me is.
Amy. On today's show, we talk with city council runoff candidates Nikki Hunter and Diana Selle about what they love about Arlington, some of their favorite places to chill out, and why they believe the voters of District Three should choose them as their representatives.
We also sit down with mayoral runoff candidates Jim Ross and Michael Gillespie to discuss what Arlington means to them, some of their favorite restaurants, memories and people in our city.
That is correct. If anybody wants to vote, hopefully everyone listening to this and their friends do. It is this Saturday. So from what is it 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, you can get your votes in. Um, check it out, get your votes in if you haven't already voted, get your votes in. If you have voted, tell others to get their votes in. This is, this one matters.
If you didn't, if you didn't vote in the first one, it doesn't matter. You can still vote in this one, come out, go vote. It's important that you elect people in your city.
Right. And you know, it might not be your district for the city council runoffs, but it is your district for the mayoral runoffs. So that's citywide, remember that.
Exactly. So we did, um, just preface, we did interview Jim Ross right before he interviewed us. So if you haven't checked us out on the Arlington experience with Jim Ross, go back and check us out. We did a fantastic interview. He interviewed us right after we interviewed him. Um, what a swell, uh, charismatic fellow he is.
And also a great view, um, from his office.
I didn't realize he was, uh, he helped start the SWAT team here in Arlington.
Yeah. And that fun little thing, that fun memory he brings up, I'm not going to say it, but the fun memory he brings up about the view from his office is really cool, too.
And his favorite building in Arlington, which is a
Yeah.
question we have added to the, you know, get to know these people. Cause you know, we're not trying to getcha questions. We're not trying to be boring. We want to keep it lively, want to keep it fun. And so, you know, we've added new questions and you know, they've had great results as well. So what else has everyone been up to when it comes to the city of Arlington?
Well, we've been moving and, uh, that's been a thing. We recently moved to Mansfield, but close enough to Arlington that we're still eating at Arlington restaurants.
Yeah, you're South Arlington, like South, South Arlington.
Yeah, basically. I mean technically Mansfield, but you know, uh, this is the situation with housing right now. There's not a lot of rent houses. There's not a lot of properties to buy. So you get in where you can, but we're happy and we are really, we're just really happy where we're at.
Fantastic.
Um, I, Roddy and I both went to the black box, uh, this week.
We were on their live.
We were on their live stream and we'll have that out as an episode ourselves in the future, um, but it was really fun, really cool place to, uh, that I'm excited to see like what, what happens as we're coming out of COVID, uh, but excited to see the live streams they're doing. Um, you know, I can't wait to see them live. It, it's just going to be a really great place and a real asset to downtown Arlington.
Without a doubt. I mean, if you saw us live, you know that, you know, they're going to do more live streams, CD release parties, private little concerts, you know, September moon wink, wink, may or may not be playing there. They may not wink, wink, have an open mic coming soon. Just a lot of things happening in this area, you know, Urban Union isn't just that squared area that you have legal draft, union works, uh, Four Kahuna's cartel, all those places. It's grows all the way down to, you know, even Mellow Mushroom, Mellow Mushroom could be part of it.
It like connects these different parts of Arlington now, like these downtown, like Urban Union connects with where the, uh, you know, it with Hortado right there, it right up to Grease Monkey, that right up to Mellow Mushroom, right up to Abram, right up to Twisted Root, you know, like it's all starting to come together like that.
Yeah.
And it's all walkable.
Yeah, hopefully it's going to end up more walkable soon, right? Where you can walk across the tracks, go down Division, you know, go down Abram, um, go to the library, all of that. And that's all part of the city's vision, which is really appreciated, right? Because that wasn't something that, uh, they had considered before, but now they are. So.
Well, I mean, that's the other thing that we've talked to multiple people about now that they built up this entertainment in, you know, district, but they didn't even include what was happening in Urban Union because nothing was happening there. And then it happened and they're like, oh crap, how do we connect all this stuff? So, you know, they're trying to build a way to connect everything and then Urban Union is just growing the way it is. And I can't wait to see what, you know, at the end of 2022 looks because Front Street along the railroad tracks could be very well built up. And like you said, there's going to be that bridge across, you know, I would say over the railroad tracks, I doubt they're going underneath.
And not to mention anything of those apartments are going to have more and more businesses down below, like we're getting a grocery store down there, you know, like, uh,
Happening y'all.
Yeah, it's, it, it's coming up in a big way.
It's all happening. So it's fantastic.
We are here with Diana Selle. She is in the runoff for city council District Three here in Arlington. How are you doing?
I'm doing great. Thank you so much for having me back.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, thanks for taking your time out. You just said you'd been block walking and I'm sure you're tired. Um, so thanks for, for taking this time.
Absolutely.
Um, so the first question I want to ask, we've talked to you before, um, is were you surprised to enter the runoff?
Honestly, yeah, yes and no. I will admit, we've worked really, really hard over the last few months and especially since the last time we all spoke together. So I was, you know, feeling very confident going into it, but the no part just comes from you can never take anything for granted. Um, you know, despite the, the, the great support that we've received and the momentum that we've had, you just never know until the, the day of what, what the turnout will look like. So it was, uh, we were very happily surprised.
What does Arlington, the American dream city mean to you?
Oh, it means so much. So it's my home. Um, so that means a lot and home is where your heart is. And my, my heart is fully and firmly planted here, uh, which is a big reason why I ran for, for office was to make sure that I was able to contribute in a meaningful way to the place that's been home for the, for the last 10 years. And so, um, it means a lot and just to see the growth and the incredible, um, things that are happening, um, I'm, I'm excited and honored to be a part of that.
So, um, we're doing, we're doing some more fun questions this time. Um, do you have a favorite building in Arlington?
Ooh, I absolutely love the art museum, Arlington Art Museum. And that's more, less about the building itself and what the building contains. I think, uh, you know, aesthetics wise, it's, it's a standard building, but it's just a, it's, it's amazing what it contains and that we have, uh, you know, such a, a great resource from an art perspective and all of the, um, programming that our art museum provides. I don't know, what about y'all? Do y'all have a favorite building?
Um, I answered this recently. I guess I, I like Arlington Music Hall. I really love the marquee. So I, it's like one of the things of the, I, growing up here, I was like, yeah, like Arlington, like it says Arlington, like, and it looks cool. So yeah, I'd probably say that.
Yeah, it's great for photos.
It is, it is. Yeah, it's kind of like the spot for, uh, for photos.
And there's no other marquee like in Arlington that you could like.
Not as like well done as that, like.
And it screams small town downtown.
It really does, absolutely. Even though we're, we're growing and it's a big city, but it does have that small town feel.
Right.
So, uh, when was the last time you got a speeding ticket in Pantego?
I've actually never gotten a speeding ticket in Pantigo. I know, which is super rare. I do need to knock on wood because I know this is a, is a rare occurrence. Now I have gotten a speeding ticket in Arlington. Um, just not in, in Pantego.
Most people have, that's why I know.
Honestly, it's my only, I, you know, I travel all over the state often and you know, for some reason that's.
Was it on the highway or on a street?
It was on, actually on the service road right next to the highway. Adjacent to the highway. Um, but yeah, never, never Pantigos. I definitely need to knock on wood.
And go the speed limit in Pantigo always.
Always, always.
What's your favorite memory of Arlington?
Favorite memory? You know, I've, my memories are, I want to say more recent. Uh, I have a lot of really great memories over the years, but I will say some of the amazing things that we've been able to accomplish and be a part of, um, just these last few months and, um, having the support from residents that I would have never otherwise met, um, has been incredible and just, you know, attending the different community events and, and things like that have just been so incredible. But apart from that, I would say just, you know, I, I, I touched on a first milestone for me, uh, personally in Arlington. And so I, I always wanted to, uh, own my own home. So that was a big memory slash milestone was to, to own my first home here. Um, and it's just, I'm, I'm glad that, so when I say I'm firmly planted here, I'm not going anywhere.
You put, you put the money down, literally and figuratively.
And it's so hard now to find a, a place anyway. You just stay put. Um, okay, so I have a lightning round. Okay. Uh, if you had to choose between, just a couple of questions, are you ready?
Yeah, let's do it.
Okay. Uh, Division or Legal Draft?
That's you're, you're going to put me in the hot seat for real with that one. Lines will be drawn.
It's fine. Like, like I explained to everyone, I love all of the things that we're about to ask you, but I do have preferences of one or the other. Like I'm not going to be like, oh, I, I don't like legal draft. I love legal draft, but you know, for me, it's Division. Like they just do crazier beaters and that's what I'm into. So like.
And the atmosphere.
Yeah, I, that's true aesthetically.
Can I play the fifth on this one? This one's tough.
Both.
Six Flags or Hurricane Harbor?
Six Flags.
Texas Rangers or the Dallas Cowboys?
Another tough one.
Yeah. I think for me, it's the Rangers.
I was just going to say the Rangers.
They've always been here and.
My dad's going to hate me, but it's definitely the Rangers.
I agree.
It's more accessible, right?
Yeah, yeah. It's cheaper to go to.
Absolutely.
Even the new one is still.
I've, I've attended more Rangers games than I can afford to do Cowboys games, honestly.
Right, exactly.
Uh, worst highway 20 or 30?
They're both pretty bad. Worst, probably 20 for me. Just, uh, I, I have to drive more on 20.
20 and 360 is always just a nightmare.
A nightmare always.
Every, every part of the day.
Every time.
Um, I'm going to skip the next one too, because we asked that last time. Do you have a favorite Arlington night, like a favorite Arlington person?
There's a few that come to mind. I want to say Joanna Cardoza. Um, she ran for city council. She ran for District Two, but, uh, apart from her experience as a candidate, she's just an incredible community advocate. I mean, she's everywhere. I, I ask her often, you know, what's your secret? How do you manage your schedule? Like, what are your tips? Because she takes on so much and she does so mu- so much passionately as well and is still an incredible mom, is still an incredible businesswoman.
Still wears all the hats while still doing.
Every single hat and does not, you know, juggle so many things and does not drop the ball. So she's often my inspiration.
That's cool. Very awesome. And it's, it's nice to hear someone who's like still active in the community because we've had, we've asked a couple of people and they're like Tom Van der Graaff and total like totally like legit answer, right? But like the person you talk about is actually still out there, like doing the thing, you know?
We need to talk to her.
Yeah, sure.
You should put us in touch.
I will, absolutely. I'm sure she'd love to talk to y'all. She, she's a great person to talk to and just an all around amazing human.
Yeah.
Great. Okay. Lightning round two. All right. This one, um, I'm just going to ask you your favorite and you give me a place, okay?
Okay.
Tacos.
Favorite taco place? Uh, I've seriously gone to, uh, Cartel Taco like six times in the last three weeks.
Perfect pizza.
Which we asked last time too, but you know, it's fine. My answer changes too.
I'm thinking, I, I don't have it. I eat all pizza, so I really don't have a favorite or a preference.
All of the above.
All of the above, all pizza anytime.
All right. Uh, what about for coffee? Do you have a small coffee place you like?
It's, it's, it's a District Three plug, but I love them so much and I, I've been going to them for years, but it's Saber.
Yeah.
And Inclusion's really great, just around, around the corner from here. So when I'm on this side of town, I frequent Inclusion.
Um, do you have a barber or hairdresser here in town you've been going to?
I do not. I'm just do a lot myself.
Me too. I don't have a lot of hair, so for me, there's no point in going to a barber.
Um, what about your favorite spot in Urban Union?
Hmm, well, I mentioned, um, Sugarby sweets is another really great one. Love, love their desserts.
Yeah, Salter Bros is over there too.
Salter Bros for coffee.
I was at Tipsy Oak yesterday, so yeah.
I went, uh, well, I, we tried to go to Four Kahuna's, but it was closed. A water main broke, so.
Oh, that's right.
I was like, oh, great. Oh, man.
I didn't know that. Do they, when is it going to be fixed?
No, it's fixed now. Yeah, it was like a one day thing, but I was like, yes, I'm going to go and then I didn't.
So if people want to follow you again, support you, donate, find you on social media and all the websites, where can they do so?
So it's Diana for Arlington, uh, our website, social media, and that's for F O R.
There you go.
Uh, so any, any support is greatly appreciated. Uh, we're, you know, we're right at the, at the start of early voting round two, which starts back up on Monday, the 24th. So if you're interested in volunteering, we can, we need all hands on deck.
Great. And don't forget, uh, so early voting starts.
Monday.
Monday, the 24th.
And then the election is the June 5th.
Great. So get out and vote again.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
There are two, there are two very important elections still to be decided, so. And I will say, we had a little bit more turnout this time than we had in the last two, and just a little bit, but incremental change is still change. So go out and vote in this one too.
Absolutely. Progress happens locally, so we need everyone to, your vote is your voice, uh, so we need all voices to be heard.
Well, thank you so much for coming and taking this time out to talk to us. We really appreciate it and, uh, good luck.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. This is always such a fun time, so.
We are here with Nikki Hunter. She is in the runoff race for city council District Three. How are you today?
I'm good. How are you guys doing?
Doing great. Doing real good. Uh, you know, we have a lot of, we have some fun questions today. We've got a couple of, uh, you know, standard questions, but we'll, we'll just start with the standard, you know, I know we've heard from you before, but you know, what, what made you decide to run for city council and you know, what, what made you decide to do it? Just jump in.
Yeah, definitely. Well, I originally wasn't going to run, um, in this race, but what made me really decide to get in was I felt like what the candidates that we had in were not addressing the issues that were really needed over in District Three. One of our main issues that we have over here is our crime. Our crime level is up by 35%. Our neighborhood, um, need to be a priority. Um, we have streets that need to be fixed over here. We have fences. It's just things like that. So we need our neighborhoods to be a priority and that was why I'm, that's why I'm in this race. I felt like, you know, the three candidates at the time that we're in, we're not addressing those needs.
So what is Arlington, the American dream city mean to you?
It means everything. This is my home. It's been my home since kindergarten. I was not born here, but I started here in kindergarten. I love Arlington and I want to see the best for the city. I mean, as residents, we all want to see our city grow and, and you know, become better than what it was maybe when we were younger. So I want what's best for our district as well.
That's true. Yeah. Yeah. I mean, I'm in the same boat. I started, I, I moved here when I was in kindergarten and you know, I've been here most of my life now, since then. And absolutely like, uh, you know, wonderful. Um, so this is kind of a fun question. Um, I hope, I hope you can answer, it's kind of a weird one, but, uh, do you have a favorite building in Arlington? Is there like a building you see or like a spot you see and just, you know, it just makes you go, yes, I love it. This is Arlington.
Um, that's, that is a fun question. You know, I went to UTA and I gotta say, I really like UTA's new look because when I went there, which seems like ages ago, it didn't look like that. They've added on a lot. So you know, when I passed by there, I'm like, oh, cool. You know, that wasn't like that when I went to school over there. When I went, they, um, and this is probably telling like I graduated in 2010 from there, but they were just building like that newer, um, sports area.
Yeah, College Park Center and.
The College Park, yeah, yeah, yeah. So when I go over there, it's kind of like, oh my, my God, this is like so cool to look at, you know? So I'm, I am in awe of it, to be honest with you.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I, I went to UTA and I graduated in 2013. So like same, like I passed the new engineering building and the new like, uh, science building, college park. I'm really like proud to have been like, I, I really, I'm proud to have been a, a UTA Mav and to see it grow and continue to grow and become like a really great part of the UT system.
Oh yeah, it's nothing like being a Maverick. You know what I'm saying? That stuff's just like the, the thing in Arlington here.
100%, absolutely. We got, we got a little fun one too, another one. Um, when was the last time or if you, have you ever gotten a speeding ticket in Pantigo?
Um, yes.
Same, I think almost.
Not recently, um, but yeah, you know, um, I know very few people who haven't gotten.
Yeah, Pantigo and DWG, we're pretty sure that's the only way they keep driving. So what is your favorite memory of Arlington?
Oh wow, there's so many good memories here. Um, you know, I talk a lot about my grandparents and, and you know, they've both passed away, but just there's so many childhood memories that I share with them here in Arlington, you know, going to the parks, um, just, it's kind of hanging out off of, um, you know, Division Street and things like that looked different back then. I mean, this was in the eighties. But it's just, I, when I think of Arlington and, and the memories, it's, it's the memories I have with my grandparents that, you know, that ever in my memory and in my heart.
That's amazing. So we have a little lightning round, a little four question lightning round, just real quick, your preference on, on these things. Division brewing or legal draft?
Okay, that's a hard one. Uh, I can't say it's a tie, right?
I, I love them both, so I get it 100%. Well, I guess.
I do, I like both of them.
Yeah, why do you like either one? Yeah, what's, what's one of your favorites about one or both of them?
Legal, I would say legal draft, I've been to probably a little bit more. Uh, I just, you know, you can have, we've had meetings in there for, for certain events and things like that. So I would say definitely I would lean more towards them, I guess, as being the, the favorite maybe, but you know, Division Brew is also good too. So I just, I like them both.
All right. Six Flags or Hurricane Harbor?
Okay, let me tell you a secret. I can't swim.
Neither can I.
So yeah, that's Six Flags.
All right. This one's probably tough too, but the Rangers or the Cowboys?
Oh, you're trying to get me in trouble. Here aren't you. Okay, that's a tie. Um, I am a huge football fan. I come from a football loving family, so I definitely love the Cowboys, but let me tell you something, I love the Texas Rangers too.
All right. Love it. All right. And this one, this one's a tough one too. Worst highway 20 or 30?
Oh, um, I'm going to have to go with 20.
Really?
Yeah. I'm going to have to go with 20, honestly.
All right. So think about 10 years from now, how does the city look to you?
I think the city's going to, you know, there's definitely going to be some, some growth, obviously. I mean, we are, we're, we've grown since last 10 years, so I think there's definitely going to be some growth. I think, um, you're going to see a new look in Arlington. I think it's going to have, you know, some, some new, new things pop up. I mean, I, I think as we grow, you'll see more, you know, a more diversity, especially in District Three. I mean, it's very diverse and I think that's going to continue. And that's an amazing thing to see the diversity as we grow. Um, but in a city as a whole, I, you know, I think with, with our entertainment district and, and things like that, I, I do feel like, you know, we are going to become, we already have become, you know, we're on the map. And I think that's a thing, you know, people aren't saying that, you know, we're, we're Dallas anymore for the Dallas Cowboys. It's like, no, the Dallas Cowboys are in Arlington. You know, so I think it's just little things like that. I think, you know, people really are going to see Arlington as a place that they want to live, play and, and work.
Yeah. So do you, uh, you know, you, you've been here a long time, uh, like me. Do you have a fa- a favorite Arlington night?
Like a fa- a favorite person in Arlington that, that, you know, in the long history of our city, anyone that really stands out to you is like someone that you're like, yes, I really. Yeah, I do. I do. Um, I admire, this is one of my favorite people in the whole world is Mary Tom Crennett. Um, I think she's, she's one of the most amazing women and her family has a really long history here in Arlington and I just admire her. I adore her. I really do.
That's incredible. So we have another lightning round for you. This one is your favorites in Arlington. So first off tacos.
Said tacos?
Yeah, favorite taco place.
Oh man, um.
There's so many to choose from, so I understand.
Um, you want it to be in Arlington, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, wow, I love tacos, so that's, that's kind of hard. Um, I do like Torchy's tacos, like their avocado tacos. So I would say that's probably my favorite for now, just because I love avocados and I like the way they make their tacos.
Favorite pizza place?
Old school, it's still old.
Okay, thanks. All right, all right. Yeah, so I get it. Favorite coffee place?
Oh, that's a hard one. We have several, um, like, um, and I'm drawing a blank downtown Arlington, um, Urban Alchemy.
Yeah, that place is, that place is like, uh, my third living room. I love it.
Yeah, laid back, I love it.
Favorite barber or hairdresser?
Um, well, I don't really go to a barber. Um, but hairdresser, I guess, um, I'm going to have to say mine.
Sure, yeah.
Because I'll get in trouble if I don't.
Give them a shout out so that other people go check them out too.
Right. Um, oh yeah, for Coco, she's right on Abrams, um, right in the heart of Arlington. So yeah, check her out.
There we go. And then favorite spot in Urban Union?
And I'm sorry, you said urban?
Urban Union. Urban Union.
In Urban Union, um. I haven't really visited there, honestly.
That's okay. Yeah, you should though. It's fun.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Great tiki place, axe throwing, uh coworking, there's, you know, but some for everybody.
Yeah, I'll have to check that out.
All right, so for people who wanna, you know, follow, support, donate, or check out what you're doing, uh how can I get you on social media or online?
I am all on social media. You can find my um my Facebook page, Nikki for Arlington District Three, or if you wanna check out my website, it's www dot Nikki, N I K K I, N I K K I E F O R D I S three dot com. Definitely um leave me a message. Um I answer all my my messages. I answer all my texts, phone calls. Get in touch with me. I love the chat, and I definitely wanna hear from District Three.
Perfect. Nikki, thank you so much, and everyone, make sure to go out. Early voting is happening right now. The actual runoff election date is June fifth. Uh so go out and make sure your vote is counted and heard.
Thank you guys for having me on. I appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
You do.
Bye.
Well, uh we are here with Jim Ross, candidate for mayor. How are you doing today?
I'm good, thanks.
Good. Thank you for uh meeting with us. Um runoff, exciting times. Uh that'll be interesting.
Yeah, congratulations on getting to the runoff.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it. It's interesting.
Well, you had eight people running for mayor. I think it's gonna be a little interesting, yeah.
Seven.
Seven, eight, fifteen, I mean.
Well, I don't know. How do we say that? There's eight people on the ballot.
Right.
But only seven people counted.
Right.
So you're both right.
Right, yeah, one hundred percent. So I mean, the first question we always ask is why are you running? What what made you wanna run?
Wow, um I never thought about doing anything political in nature. That's just not my personality.
Right.
But I love the community, and um I think our current mayor, Jeff Williams, has done a really good job overall on a lot of stuff. Six years isn't a long time to control what's happening in a city of four hundred thousand plus people. And um he's not done.
Right.
But he is done.
Right, right.
And uh I was concerned about who was gonna take over next, and if they were gonna keep the momentum going, or if they were gonna let this city derail and end up in a much worse position. And when nobody got into the race that I could support and help, then I decided I'd do it.
Okay, makes sense. So what does Arlington, the American dream city, mean to you?
Arlington's given me an opportunity to do all kinds of crazy things that I just enjoyed. You know, I didn't grow up here.
Right.
I grew up in Detroit. Um but I came here right out of the Marine Corps and uh which was in nineteen eighty-three.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you. And uh I wanted to be a cop, so APD hired me.
Right.
And I was a part of Arlington's first full-time SWAT team in the early eighties. I um taught self-defense and developed their police academy here in Arlington when we got our own police academy at Wus, because I'm the one that did the proposal for it.
Right.
I spent almost seven years undercover buying drugs for a living. All the really fun, cool things that I think one could do as a cop.
Right.
I was able to do.
Right.
And um I enjoyed that, and Arlington was the start at giving me those opportunities. Um and then I got to see a bunch of lawyers in trial because I testified a lot, and I remember thinking, these people aren't that great. I can do better than this. So I finally finished my undergrad at thirty-five years old. You know, I'm one of those guys.
Me too.
I I squeezed four years in the twelve or thirteen years.
Yeah.
And um I went to TCC, what which was TCJC at the time. I went to UTA. I ultimately graduated from Dallas Baptist University. And when I quit the police department to go to law school, I went through law school in twenty-eight months because I was worried about, I'm an old man. I better hurry up. So I went as quick as I could, finished in twenty-eight months and passed the bar. So I've lived here since nineteen eighty-three. Um when I opened up my own law firm, Arlington gave me that opportunity to do well here. The community responded to the relationships I built. When I opened up my restaurant, the community responded to those relationships I built. Um and uh it's always been there to help take care of me and my family, so it's time to give back a little bit.
That's amazing.
Awesome. So uh here's kind of a fun question. Do you have a favorite building in Arlington? I mean, we're here on at the top floor of your uh in your office, and there's a great view. So is there one that you always always catches your eye?
Yeah, but it's not one you're gonna think about. There's a little building uh at the northwest corner of Cooper and Main Street, and it's now the Parks and Recs Building.
Yes.
Yeah.
It used to be the Police Department and Municipal Court when I first hired on. So if I have a favorite building, it's probably gonna be that old building that I worked out of as a rookie police officer because there's so many memories there.
Sure.
Uh we just had it an incredible time over there. Um and uh that's probably the building in town that gives me my most memorable experiences. So it's it's not architecturally the prettiest building. It doesn't have any view like this building does.
But there's a personal connection.
But there's a personal connection there that I have a lot of great memories from.
Great.
So living in Arlington, uh or being in Arlington, you know, we surround Pantigo. When was the last time you got a speeding ticket in Pantigo?
Yeah, you're gonna make me disclose this.
No, you don't really have to.
No, it's it's okay. I don't mind at all. It's 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 part of my life experiences. It wasn't that long ago. I think it was, it was somewhere last fall.
Okay, okay.
I it may have even been once the campaign got going. God bless the gentleman who pulled me over, the officer, nicest can be.
Yeah.
I was speeding, and uh he got me on Pioneer Parkway and pulled me over and said, Mr. Ross, how you doing? Good to see you. All that kind of stuff, and then wrote me a speeding ticket.
Sure.
So um I got deferred adjudication and I paid my fee and all of that kind of stuff and kept it off my record. But yes, I it wasn't that long ago. And let let me tell you something. I love Pantigo.
Me too, me too.
Um but yeah, they got me recently.
They, when have they gotten you?
Pantigo and DWG, yes, both of them.
I've never gotten a ticket in Pantigo.
I've gotten a ticket in both.
Oh, yeah. I luckily have talked my way out of a DWG one, but that was.
You were like, I live right up the street.
Yeah, well, he claimed I had a.
If you talked your way out of a DWG ticket, you must be a smooth talker.
I'm a bit in sales, so I I kind of know my way around.
Well, I wasn't able to talk my way out of it. He knew that I was a former cop. He knew I was running for mayor. He he wrote me a ticket. God bless him. He did his job.
Sure.
I have no issues with it, and he was right. I was speeding, so.
So what is your favorite memory of Arlington?
Um soon as you said that, I looked out that window and saw the big orange tower at Six Flags, and I remember rappelling off of that as a SWAT officer years and years ago.
That's right, because Six Flags will do training.
So yeah, so I that that was a fun memory.
You can imagine.
Um but Lord, I don't know. I am, I I I'm riddled with fond memories of Arlington. I mean, all but my oldest son were born here, you know, all my kids. I have four kids. Um my oldest one was born when I was in the Marines out in Twenty Nine Palms, California. But my other children were born right here in Arlington. I don't I don't know that I have a single fondest memory here, but um I have just a ton of memories. You know, now most recent memories and stuff is, you know, taking my granddaughter to Six Flags, you know, those type of things, pre-pandemic times, you know. Uh those are the fun times.
That's great. And I think a lot of people, I mean, I have memories, but some of my favorite memories are. I didn't rappel off that thing, but I've been up there and I really like it. Uh just looking out over the city and how much it changes, you know, like that's one of my favorite spots in Arlington, so I understand completely.
All right, so quick lightning round, okay?
Uh oh.
We give you two choices. Pick one. You don't have to. If, I mean, answer how you want, but all right, Division Brewing or Legal Draft?
Legal Draft.
Okay, Six Flags or Hurricane Harbor?
Six Flags.
All right, Rangers?
That's because at sixty years old, I try not to see myself in a bathing suit, you know?
Yeah, no.
Maybe maybe I'd have more fun at Hurricane Harbor if I could go fully dressed.
The old twenties kind of uh.
Yeah, yeah, I I'll I'll leave the bathing suit crowd to those people who fit better in them.
All right, uh Rangers or Cowboys?
Oh, you're gonna get me in trouble. I love, love, love both teams. Um uh the Rangers are the nicest group of people. I'm always, uh I I grew up playing football. That was my sport, um so I am a football fan. But the I there's something special about the Rangers, so I'm gonna put them on equal par.
That's fair. Uh worst highway, twenty or thirty?
Thirty.
I would agree with that as well. Thirty has perpetually been under construction since I've been here, and I've been here since nineteen eighty-five. Since I've had a license.
I could I could sit here and look out here at I thirty, and about four fifteen, I see that westbound side just turn into a parking lot, so.
Okay, you won.
So uh thinking, you know, ten years from now, what do you hope the city of Arlington looks like? What 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 kind of things have happened? What what do you hope happens in the next ten years for this city?
So I'd look at, I would describe Arlington as the largest small city in America. We have a huge population, bigger than Pittsburgh, bigger than New Orleans, bigger than St. Louis. But we're not a city that people would recognize as being a large metropolitan area.
Right.
That's because we're buried in between Dallas and Fort Worth. So I wanna help Arlington continue to develop their own unique identity. You know, our own unique identity is the dream city that can offer something for everyone. We have recently moved from the eleventh to the eighth most diverse city in the country. That's something to be very, very proud of.
Yeah.
So I'd like to see us start really embracing our diversity here in Arlington, really embracing our unique culture in itself. Because while we are a huge city, we in and of itself is not a major metropolitan area. So we need to, we need to brand that so that people who are wondering where to come live and start a business and put their kids in school can understand the uniqueness that we have. It's a big city. So in ten years, I just wanna continue that branding so people have a better understanding about who we are.
True. Do you have a favorite Arlingtonite?
I have a bunch of favorites.
Well, you could talk about all of them, you know?
One of the things I was really, really proud of was um I have a friend, Parker Vandergriff, who is Tom Vandergriff's grandson. And when I started this campaign, Parker provided me a an original yard sign of Tom Vandergriff.
Cool.
Way back in the fifties when he was running for mayor. I think Tom Vandergriff did more for this city than anybody.
One hundred percent.
And uh so if I'm gonna have to say I have a favorite Arlingtonite, it would be um Mayor Tom Vandergriff.
That's good.
Yeah, that's a good answer.
Yeah. You just got both a lightning round.
I know. Next time y'all get them. All right, lightning round again. Uh this time you just tell me.
Okay.
No choices. Favorite taco place?
Fuzzy's.
Pizza?
Moni's Pizza.
Yeah, we love Moni.
Holy cow. Moni's on Randall Mill. Best pizza ever.
And good other stuff too.
Yes.
Uh coffee?
Woo. We got so many choices now.
There's so many out there. Um I love them all, from Inclusion to White Rhino to Salter Brothers. Um it just depends on what I'm in the mood for.
That's fair. I think that's a, I think that's probably the best way to answer that question.
Right, and who you wanna pop into seat, right? Do you wanna go see your friend John? Do you wanna go see guy at Inclusion? Um what about a barber?
John's Barber Shop, right over there in the same old strip plaza as Moni's. That's where I get all my beautiful hair done.
That's where my dad, that's where my dad went. I went there when I was younger.
Oh, really?
Yeah, John, John has been a barber here in Arlington for ooh three decades or so.
He worked at Hudson's?
Used to work at Hudson's, where I used to go before before Dean and Donna Hudson retired and and sold their barber shop. So John cuts the hair of the majority of the police. Um he's a, you know, you'll go in there and he has all the old police photos and stuff in there. And um he's he's just a great guy, him and his daughter and a couple other barbers in there, and um just a good, cool barber shop.
Cool. Um favorite spot in Urban Union?
Woo.
Again, so many nice ones, yeah.
So many good spots.
Every one of them, and it's still growing.
Uh. Favorite spot, you know, um I love Legal Draft. Uh I love Cartel. I love um I love me some barbecue. Barbecue. Um but then I I I just ate for the full first time at Kane Russo's.
Yeah, yeah.
And uh I love that spot too. So I I'm just gonna say hats off to Urban Union.
Yes.
They're bringing, and I love Tipsy Oak. I forgot it. Um I, you know, there's so many cool spots over there. You're, I can't pick one over there.
That's, I couldn't either. I was, I wrote that question, and I was like, this is unfair. They're all so good.
The tiki bar, thank you. Uh I mean, it's all, it's all just cool, sorta trendy. Can we say hip anymore?
Yeah, I mean, if we can, I'm not hip.
It's a, it's an old, you know, trendy hip spot there, so.
Yeah.
All right, you won again.
I won again?
Man, how crazy, two in a row.
For a guy that's winning a lot, I'm not getting any prizes whatsoever, okay?
Well, Rhodey forgot the stickers. We were gonna give you stickers.
Lollipop or anything, at least that you don't have to doctor's office.
Oh, man. All right, well, this is the first time we've done this, so we'll 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 in the future, we'll definitely be bringing bringing stuff for people to win. No, it's the last one.
There's two last ones.
No, I deleted them.
Yeah, just working.
Well, describe Arlington.
Just make them up then.
Oh, yeah, you could do that, yeah.
Describe Arlington to someone who's never been here in about twenty seconds.
Someone that's never been here. Um coolest big, small city in America.
There we go. I think that works.
Yeah. So if people wanna follow you, support you, donate, find you on social media and YouTube, you have your own YouTube show, uh which will be on, so uh where can they find?
Y'all are gonna, this is payback. We're gonna do y'all on the Arlington experience as soon as this is done, and I don't even have a list of questions. I just make a bunch of stuff up as we go along, so you're all in trouble. I'm telling you right now.
But I was so nice.
I know, I thought this was a good question.
I let you win.
You didn't, we didn't get you, but you'll get us.
Yeah, that's right. That's right. Um uh what was the question?
Where can you find you on social media, donate?
Volunteer, all that stuff.
Volunteer. You can go onto jimrossformayor dot com.
There we go.
There's a section in there where you can join Team Jim, and you can volunteer, you can ask for signs, you can donate, you can do all of that kind of stuff. Now runoff is a a a unique opportunity for us to showcase what we're all about, and if I can describe our campaign, it's about inclusion. We have had a tremendous response from this community. I've had endorsements from the left and from the right. I um I consider myself a moderate.
Right.
I I don't like political fighting. I don't like partisanship.
Yeah.
I don't like that kind of stuff. Um and our campaign has done really, really, really well on being inclusive of everybody in this city. And I think that's why we ended up with almost fifty percent.
Forty-three.
Of all of the vote in Arlington, when I had seven other people that people could have cast their votes for. And um we came really close to winning this thing without a runoff.
Yeah.
But I'm not taking it for granted that we're gonna do it now. I'm gonna work every bit as hard, if not harder than I did in the previous part of this than I am now. I'm gonna work my butt off, so.
That's good.
Great.
Yeah, June fifth is the runoff date for elections, so.
Early voting's May twenty-fourth through June first.
There we are. Jim, thank you for your time.
Absolutely.
Thank y'all.
We look forward to talking again one way or the other afterwards.
Really soon.
Yeah, yeah. Right away.
I'm here with Michael Glassby. He is uh in the runoff race for mayoral um seat in Arlington here. How are you today, sir?
Uh I am doing good. I I it's in in spite of the cloudiness, uh it's it's a good day.
It's true. Uh you can't enjoy the sunny days without the uh rainy days, so.
Well, you 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 truly get a chance to fully appreciate the sun once you've gone through the cloudiness.
It's true. I mean, plus, you know, we all know about a month, month and a half, we're all gonna complain about how it's a hundred degrees outside, so.
You say that is one of the more amazing things. Um we're going through this now, and everyone is complaining about the rain, and in August, we will be begging for this.
Yeah, we will. Our yards will a little bit. It's gonna be a bad situation. Yeah, might have been that door packed for you.
Yes, it is.
Yeah. So were you surprised to enter the runoff?
Uh you, not not necessarily surprised. I knew with all the candidates and you uh sensed that it probably would end up in a runoff. And I felt I had a a pretty good chance, so uh uh I wasn't wasn't necessarily surprised, but I was delighted.
Yeah, I can imagine. Um so why are you, why did you run for mayor?
Well, um I am, I've lived in the city for almost forty years. My wife and I have lived in the city for almost forty years. I've been uh involved a great deal in the community itself, just uh different organizations, different groups within the community. On top of that, I was very, very fortunate to be able to serve on the the school board for a number of years, and I've been on the city council. So my experience with the city, my knowledge of the city, uh just led me to to feel that uh it would be worthwhile for me to to run and hopefully become mayor, to take advantage of all that experience, take advantage of those relationships so that we could continue to build our city, to make it better and better.
There you go. What does Arlington, the American dream city, mean to you?
To me, what it means is a uh person can live here, reflect on what uh they have in the way of talent, skills, uh opportunities, and then formulate their vision for what they would like for life to be, and see that vision manifested here in Arlington, and fulfill uh their intents and purposes and and their aspirations.
That's true. So what is your favorite building in Arlington?
My favorite building? That is a great question, my favorite building. I I really like our new uh downtown library that we we.
Oh, yeah.
Uh put out. It it is. It, it is, it is really fascinating to go in and see the number of different, uh, opportunities you have to explore life and, and then, uh, it's a potential meeting place, uh, that we can all come, come together in. So I would say the library, and also I like the Levitt Pavilion that we have that's sold over there.
Oh, yeah.
Because it gives us a chance to come together as a community and enjoy ourselves collectively.
Right. Yeah, and I mean, the library just, uh, posted that they're fully open again with their, you know, everything's back to, not back to normal, but, you know, back to being open over there, and then Levitt has been, you know, having their, uh, summer concerts, so it's, both are incredible buildings.
Yeah, and in fact, Saturday, last Saturday was one of the, uh, first, uh, I guess you could say, sort of biggest event that had, that's just there, and it was packed. It was just a great, great field.
Yeah, it, it is a fantastic field of everybody, you know, whether they weren't comfortable going out or, you know, just didn't want to because of obviously the pandemic. But it's good to see everyone come back again and then just genuinely be happy about being out with people again. Cause, you know, a lot of people didn't go outside, and so you have this, um, you know, not, it's just coming together again as people, uh, is just an absolutely beautiful thing to see.
Which just reminds us of the fact that we are social beings, we, we enjoy being around one another.
That's very true. Yeah, I mean, you just get, you, feeding off each other's energy is always a beautiful thing that I enjoy doing. So when was the last time you got a speeding ticket in Pantigo or Dow Worthington Gardens?
When was the last time I had a speeding ticket in Pantigo and Dow Worthington Gardens? To be honest, I don't think I've gotten a speeding ticket in either of those.
Oh, wow!
I've, I've got, the, uh, I think I've had, I know I can remember one, or maybe two, and they were, they were, they were in Arlington proper.
Okay. I was gonna say, cause it's kind of a, a badge of honor for getting a speeding ticket from one of those places.
Okay.
It's like, did you, did you live in Arlington if you didn't get that?
I think I leave that badge on the table.
It's, hey, it's, there, it's, it's fine by me. Don't get, I mean, obviously don't try to get a speeding ticket anywhere, but especially, uh, in those two cities. It just seems to be one of those things that if, did you really live in Arlington if you didn't get a speeding ticket in one of those two cities?
Yeah. Yeah.
Uh, so what is your favorite memory of Arlington?
Uh, what is my favorite memory of Arlington? I, I, that's a, it's just a whole experience of my, our, our family being able to, to, uh, mature here. You know, our, we had, we had two children already when we moved, and our third child was born in Arlington.
Okay, that's.
And to be able to watch, yeah, to be able to watch them grow and explore life and to be able to, 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 uh, partake of the things that the city had to offer was, was, is always, it, it's just been a ni- a nice overall experience.
That's fantastic. So we have a couple lightning rounds, this is the first one. Basically, which one do you enjoy more? Uh, first one, Division or Legal Draft?
Division, the street.
Sorry, Division Brewing or Legal Draft Brewing? Sorry.
Uh, to, to be honest, I, I, I've, I've not really, I don't drink.
Oh, okay. Good for you.
I've, I've not really partaken. I've been in, I've been in Legal Draft.
Oh.
But, but I, I, I really, I don't drink.
Uh, there's nothing wrong with that. Uh, Six Flags or Hurricane Harbor?
Uh, probably Six Flags.
Okay. Texas Rangers or Dallas Cowboys?
Uh, probably towards the Cowboys.
Okay. And worst highway, twenty or thirty?
Uh, that is, that's almost a toss-up. Probably thirty because, uh, you, uh, there, there, there tends to be more of the, the Fort Worth, Dallas traffic on the north side than, 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 uh, uh, on the south side, so I'd probably say thirty.
Right. Um, think about Arlington ten years from now. Where do you see this, what do you see the city look like?
Well, uh, ten years from now, uh, one of the, one of the things I, I, I think we will, um, a lot of the, the infrastructure things that we're dealing with, for example, having broadband in place so that we can, we can be a dynamic city, uh, that businesses can thrive in, uh, hopefully we will have, have attracted some additional businesses because, uh, ideally, we'd like to have more of a balance between, uh, business and residential, uh, tax base. Um, the city probably is, has, has kinda reached its, uh, close to its max in terms of, uh, uh, grow, growth, uh, population-wise, because, you know, we're, we're fairly, fairly dense now. So I, I would, I would think that we were, are pretty much peaking at that particular point in time.
Right, yeah, let, let's start going up.
Yeah, 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 well, that, that, that's, that seems to be something that's uncomfortable. Hopefully, but, uh, by that time, we should have defined, uh, how we can implement, uh, a, a, um, transit, uh, mass transit, public transportation system that's cost-effective, that, that we, we feel very comfortable with. Uh, there will be this high-speed rail between Dallas and Fort Worth, uh, that should be stopping in Arlington, uh, so we can be partakers of that. Uh, um, our, uh, the, the region itself, uh, will even be more of a financial hub than it is now. I, I, uh, because there's so, so much, so many advantages we have that could attract, uh, other businesses in. So we, 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 uh, should be even more of a, uh, of a financial hub, uh, if you will, uh, in the region itself. Uh, hopefully our cities, uh, you know, Dallas, Fort Worth, Arlington, Carleplin, or, we, we would've come, uh, working closer together so that we are, um, more efficiently tied together as a region so that we can operate smoothly, smoothly around and about. So, uh, there, there's a, uh, a great deal that, that, uh, yeah, I see, uh, happening, uh, in, in the, uh, next ten years.
I believe so, too. Do you have a favorite Arlington night?
A favorite Arlington night?
Yes, sir, uh, yeah.
Probably if I did, it would, probably if I did, it would be, uh, 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 just Vandergriff.
Okay, yeah.
Tom, Tom Vandergriff, he, 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 he's sort of the model of, of Arlington night.
Yeah, without a doubt. So we have another lightning round, um, just, one is basically just what your favorite, uh, place to get these are. So favorite taco place?
Favorite taco place, probably, probably Fuzzies.
Okay, yeah, oh, they're so good. Uh, favorite pizza place?
Uh, Mellow Mushroom.
There you go. Favorite coffee place?
Starbucks. It's almost a given.
Yeah. Uh, favorite, uh, barber shop?
Favorite bar, actually, I have a, a kind of a personal barber that, that I, I, uh, 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 scheduled to, to go visit, and his name is, uh, Ken Leverden. So, and he, and he, he, he's basically set up at his home, so.
Oh, nice, okay.
Yeah.
Uh, and then favorite spot in Urban Union?
Favorite spot in Urban Union?
Yes, sir.
Um, now that throws me.
I mean, there's so many good places in there, too, plus it's still growing, so.
Mm-hmm.
Lots to use for.
Oh, that's, now, now, that's, that's, uh, I, I really have not gone that much, much in there, so I, I would, I would have to, uh, uh, I, I'd be, I'd be off-base identifying each.
You're good. No, I mean, uh, you've been inside Legal Draft, so that's always, that's a start. Um, right across the little, uh, street there is Cartel Taco, they're fantastic. Behind them is a Tiki Place, they've got, uh?
I, I've, I've, I've been in there, the, 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 Tiki Place. And, yeah, and they, you know, so they're, they're all good, you know? Those that I've encountered, in fact, I saw, um, I can't think of the name of the shop, but there's a, there's a place that, that does catering, but that, that, uh,
Hmm, yeah, um.
Really good, yeah.
I can't come up with their name off the top of my head either, but, yeah, they are, they're always out at the farmer's market that they have out there, and they're, they do fantastic food.
Right, right. So, uh, and what I, but, you know, basically what I tend to do is, um, just a few places, uh, you know, I can, you know, if I mentioned Mellow Mushroom, uh, I'll stop by Babes every now and then and pick up, uh, pick up something, but, but, uh, um, very typically on, on Saturday night, on Saturdays, uh, when might be a good time to do those, I'm sitting at home trying to chill. Because, uh, you know, I'm a minister, I'm a minister and then typically getting ready for Sunday morning.
Oh, yeah, you, your, your days start early on Sundays.
Yeah, yes, it does.
No, that makes sense, but, well, if people wanna follow you, support you, donate, and find you on social media or a website, where can they do so?
Uh, my website is www dot glassbyforarlington dot com.
There we go. And is that, uh, the word for or the number four?
Say it again, now?
Is that the word for or the number four?
The word for.
Yeah, like, uh, I'm sorry, Glassby for, yeah, for mayor, uh, is it the number or?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, yeah, no, no.
Yeah, sorry, I thought, yeah.
It's the word, I'm sorry, it's the word. It's the word for, F, F, O, yeah, yeah.
Okay, well, I mean, some, yeah, some people have been doing the, uh, numbers and making sure.
Ah, you are absolutely correct. You, you're absolutely correct, yeah, you, you, you're right about that. And of course, on, on Fa- Facebook, too, it's just Facebook, uh, Glassby for Arlington, like, uh.
All right, I appreciate, I appreciate your time and, you know, good luck this Saturday. Uh, we look forward to talking to you one way or the other afterwards.
Thank you for, for the, the opportunity, and you have a great day.
Thank you, sir, you too.
All right, bye-bye.
Bye.
Thank you so much to all of our guests this week. Of course, we always appreciate any representatives or potential representatives of the city coming to speak with us. We really love your input, we love learning about you, and we know that our audience loves learning about you. This is a great opportunity for anybody that's interested in political leadership in Arlington to come on our show and talk to us and talk to our audience, and we appreciate it every time. So what's coming up?
So, uh, every Monday is Trivia Night at Dr. Jekyll's in Pantigo, so you can get you some brews and, you know, try to win you some trivia.
Cast your brain cells while you still have. Uh, every Thursday from five to seven is an open mic at Grounds and Gold, and I will be hosting today, tonight, I guess I should say. Um, so every other week I will be hosting. I was not there two weeks ago, I had a, uh, bit of an issue with the hospital. Uh, but I will be there again this week and every other week after this. So come on out, if you know an artist, are an artist, just wanna be, you know, and a musician wanna get your reps in. We have illusionists, poetry, uh, reading, actual, or songwriters, any comedians. You know, if you wanna come out, uh, come on out, five to seven, and, uh, show off what you got.
Great, and I wanna say, Rhodey, you're okay. The hospital issue is not with you and everything is resolved now. I don't wanna scare anybody.
No, my girlfriend is okay, she, uh, bit of a minor heart attack, she's got a stent, she's A-OK, so.
She is great, she looks great. All right. Every Thursday night is Trivia Night at Division Brewing, one of our favorite, all-time favorite places, check that out.
Uh, uh, every second and fourth Tuesday at Create Arlington is Open Mic Poetry Night. So come out, spoken word, uh, poetry, and do your thing right in the heart of downtown.
Uh, tonight, June third, we have the Downtown Arlington Urban Market hosted by Legal Draft. It'll be from four to eight P.M. Uh, come on out and, uh, check out, they have at least forty different vendors coming out. Every time they do this, it's once a month, it's absolutely amazing, and I love to see the support that happens with the city.
Great. Also, this Friday, that's June fourth, Dr. Jekyll's is hosting live music. These are three bands, amazing bands, we know most of them. Friot Trio, Primo Danger, and Dream Feed. Come out, it starts at eight P.M., get some beers, and listen to some awesome, real, local music. Also, if you're a local musician looking to record in Arlington, please consider The Cove. It's located in beautiful downtown Arlington. They offer full-service recording, mixing, editing, and much, much more.
Yep. And they also have a tie to the Black Box. So if you record at The Cove, you've already got an in to your city release party, which, you know, like we just talked about, downtown Arlington. There's no other better place to be.
All right, well, thank you, and, uh, don't forget to...
Make sure to go and eat local, drink local, and...
Go rediscover your city.
Tag us and send those pictures over to us on Facebook, Arlington Citizen Media, Twitter, ATX Citizen Media. Tag us on Instagram, Arlington Citizen Media, and send a, send those pictures the old-fashioned way. Email arlingtoncitizenmedia@gmail dot com. Also, go to our website, www dot arlingtoncitizenmedia dot com. Don't forget to subscribe and give those five-star reviews of the downtown at Apple Music, Spotify, Google Podcasts, and also hit us on SoundCloud, iHeartRadio, and YouTube.